All right, welcome to this evening's work session. Um, the odds will be going over is continuation of our bylaws discussion. Um, and Dan will present on that and following that we'll do the library board um policies and uh Ross will present on that. Um, I would imagine this evening should go pretty smoothly considering no questions or anything was asked um. Over email or things of that nature, so um but by all means, we're here for discussion and Dan take it away.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, so in your packet is the latest red line version of the the proposed bylaws for the board. This has been, I think we've brought this um before you. Four, five times at this point, um. Tonight, though, is is a momentous occasion because it's the first time in quite a while that we have every trustee present. So that's exciting. Um, the goal here is to get this over the get this over the line and uh and bring it in forward for adoption in the near future. So the board can have bylaws. Trustee Cannon uh was absent for the last, I think, last couple of conversations. Um, I know you've received the packets during that time. The version that's in the packet today, the only significant change from the last time you had a conversation about this is one, the proclamation section. Um, after discussion at a work session. In June, perhaps, um, there was. It was agreed by the board members that were present that perhaps the complicated proclamation section that I had drafted was a little too much. Um, and so it got reduced to being a proclamations big going back to mayoral proclamations, which historically is what the town has done. Um, so the section on proclamations in here is significantly changed from the last version. Section. Thirteen and fourteen are regarding confidentiality and um privileged information. Um, one of those sections, which is I identified here as thirteen or alternate A. Um, this is. Effectively, the version that was in the packet uh the last time that there was a conversation. I I cleaned it up a little bit, just kind of to 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 make it. The wording makes sense and make the formatting make sense, but really it's 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 identical substantively uh to what was discussed before. Um, alternate B um was included uh. Trustee uh Moyer in that meeting um and and some other meetings prior to that discussed a desire to have more. Black and white, um, which is, as you know, with lawyers, we don't always love. Right, black and white, but but um and especially with some of these issues, they're they're kind of um, I'll say squishy, yeah, but. Having black and like white language isn't always possible, but you want some more some more clarity to it. So um I worked with her during um kind of that interim drafting something a little more. Concrete, um, call that alternate B or section fourteen. Um, and then section fifteen um is new. From even the last time this was in the packet, the the last time all of this was in the packet, a month ago, or still, I believe, uh, trusted cannon was unable to be at that meeting, or maybe he's another trustee was so. Uh, the the that discussion was continued simply because we wanted a full house. Um, so even new since then is what's uh in here is section fifteen um regarding whistleblower protection. This was um uh. Based on some conversations with trustee teets. Um, she had made some recommendations of some language. I I worked with her to clean up. Some language to to remove some items that wouldn't quite work, uh, but that was a proposal of trust and teats for discussion. So those are kind of the new big items. Proclamations is substantially changed. The confidentiality provision and then the whistleblower protection. Um, uh, also, though, I have had conversations with trustee Cannon. Um, who who hasn't been at the last couple of meetings, so there might be some items that need to be. If you, if there are items you wanted to rediscover, um, this is an opportunity to discuss anything that's on here.
No, you you took out board of zoning adjustments, so I'm happy.
I appreciate you keeping on me for that.
I'm like, I really have my contract.
I'll fix.
Um, so uh. Think this is open for conversation. How would you like to 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 move forward? Uh, would you like to go section by section?
Yeah, let's do a section by section.
Okay, um, I'll start with a section what's identified as section eleven. Um, and I and by when I say section by section, it's gonna be the. New sections, the changed sections, not not starting with number one.
There's proclamation.
That's proclamations. Um, as I said, this is dramatically changed based on the last conversation, going back to more of a mayoral proclamation. Um, is there any questions, comments, concerns on this one?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Um, who or how is like public interest going to be determined? For the community. Like, we have a general sense, but I think when it comes to controversial issues, there's like what's federally like it's. Um, what's federally celebrated, what's celebrated statewide, and then for our community that could feel different. But I think when it comes to those things, there should be a definite gauge or benchmark or process for figuring that out.
It would, in this case, in the case that the language that's proposed here, it would be determined at the discretion of the mayor.
Right.
So if you'd like more.
Mean a lot. A lot of things depending on who's sitting in that seat. So I'd like some kind of clarification there if it's possible or suggestion.
You'd like to go back to a process where there's rules for what the mayor has to follow.
A definition of what that means. What is? Like. What is that? Threshold for a public interest that makes something okay, and if it lives in the mayor's mind, then so be it, but. I don't know that that is always going to be acceptable to the community or. Other trustees.
That's it, does, well. Um, I don't. Does anybody believe that same thing, think that there should be something in there? Is that something we should pursue?
Well, I uh. I'll just come out and say it. We did we did a proclamation for. For for pride. Okay, I felt very positive about that, but that may not pass under just a. Whoever's sitting in this chair. Um, I did like some of the low over languages that talked about that the clerk would maintain a list of proclamation. Because that says if you these are established and so forth like that. Uh, because I mean. And it'd be even that public comment one night. Someone was talking about, you know, you. Proclamations every week, and you could have proclamations. It's National Secretary Day. It's 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 what, you know, and all these kind of things can can overwhelm. To some degree. You know, they talked about this wording says proclamations which are political, religious or controversial in nature, or they would not likely enjoy a high level of community interest to support or discourage. There's, I don't know if you can just say, this is what we'll support and this is what we won't support. I think I think that's too hard of a line.
That's that's a hard thing to prove.
Yeah, it's.
Age.
And then there'll be, we'll have to work around as well, change the language or something like that, you know. Um. I I just don't know if if there's any way that you can. Put some kind of baseline or gauge on that, or I.
I like the wording that it says proclamations are official town documents that may be issued for purposes included but not limited to. Public awareness, education, civic and cultural celebrations. So, and I think pride is a culture.
And I I think like maybe assuming.
Kind of helps with that.
I know that it's been difficult both years, and it was denied this year, and I'm not willing.
Well, it wasn't.
Do it well. I had to read it in my board report.
Yeah, all proclamations will put on hold till this is done.
That's fine, but. I had to do it in my board report, and I think the annual list provided of a national. List of celebrated things that outside of that, if you wanted to add to or take away, whatever. Have discussion about that or mayor, do whatever you want, you know, but that at least provided somewhere to start from instead of like this. Need to generate this on a monthly basis. So like that just seems a lot of work and having that list is easy to do and pull from what's done nationally. Um, or at a state level. I think that would be a happy medium. Um.
So like a list of proclamations that can be done by the town, not necessarily everyone has to be done because the list could be very long.
Sure, the clerk would generate that, I think, is what the old language said.
I I think that was uh the current generated and the board would vote on it basically at the beginning of the year. So it was sort of a at. Kind of that initial um organizing meeting that's held in January where there's, you know, we 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 say we're meeting notices are going to be posted and things like that. At that time, there'd be a resolution that says, and these are the proclamations um that. The board supports. Um, so there's kind of a, and that'll be sort of just a running year by year, your list. Um, it wouldn't be pulled from. It it would be the board voting on that was the idea. Um, and we could do that in addition to this. I mean, simply saying. Proclamations sole discretion or mayor shall sole discretion approved mayoral proclamations, and then I don't know, section B or section C would say at. That initial meeting, the board will. Or a list that we provide for.
Interest that they have.
I think that's it. I mean, that's a great compromise.
The well, the I I think it would be the kind of standard.
No.
I I think it would be kind of the standard item, so it would have um, every year we do public. Public Works Day here, directed, it'd be kind of these standard ones that the town does. Um, the mayor would have discretion. Because there's another section here about people requesting, which of course members of the public can request. So so the ones that are outside of that list, the ones that are. Come up in the middle of the year, for example, the Wellington football team. Wouldn't put that on the list, of course, we'd hope they'd win or go to the championships every year.
They're ranked number seven, they're ranked number one.
So maybe we can just leave that on there, but but things like that where they come up. Okay, this isn't on the list. Mayoral proclamation, he'd have discretion, but it would give the board input at the beginning of the year with this sort of standing list. That'd be, and that'd be good, that'd be compromised, that would be work.
Sounds like the board can do do input at that point, but he will have a final, whoever's in the mayor's seat at that point has the final determination. On that, it's kind of the way.
Well, I'm I'm saying it'd be, uh, this would be a list that is actually approved by the board. So so what's on the list?
Can be done, the mayor can't say no to that list.
Oh.
Is that, is that what you're?
That's what I was proposing is, um, or that's what I was saying is, is if the board votes on the list, these are the things you we will do.
All in favor.
Bye.
Bye. I can add that.
Rebecca, you good with that or trustee Daly?
Uh, the only concern I have is to make sure we don't eliminate the part. Uh, like the option to celebrate the football team and stuff like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, no, no. Yeah.
It would, it would be in addition to kind of the 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 proposal that's in here where things like the football team could be brought forward and the mayor would get to say that that would be at the discretion of the mayor.
Okay.
I I. If the majority of the board agrees with that, I think I'm fine with that, but I am going to say the same thing I've said about a thousand times at this point, which is that. Proclamations, in my opinion. Should be something that ninety-five percent of residents agree with, not fifty percent, not twenty percent, not whatever that happens to be, and I certainly don't mean to dissuade any. Community members or anything in that regard. What I'm talking about is proclamations are supposed to be uh, it's kind of the uh, in official. The stance of the town in terms of a celebration or whatever that happens to be for any particular item. Again, in my purview, that should be. Like ninety-five percent of people agree with that. If there's. You know, that's just my opinion, but again, I'm I'm fine to go with.
And we will.
Whatever the board decides.
We will be voting on each one of these too, and it's true, so it's going to depend upon the makeup of the board. Where some of these get approved or not.
Sure.
So again, it's gonna be, you know, we're.
I I I can see that potentially working, sure, I just.
I mean, I agree with you on that, but I see reasoning behind that.
And I agree, I mean, I agree with that too, but I think this is a beautiful compromise and.
Sure.
At what point do you ever get ninety-five percent consensus?
Well, but it's like, it's like.
Football, some people hate football.
Oh, sure. Well, I mean, I mean, basically what he's saying, what he's saying is we shouldn't even do the proclamation for football. It should just be government proclamations of like this is National Secretary.
I don't, I don't, I just, I'm sorry, I'd have to disagree with that. Proclamation is a celebration, you know, it's it's a, it's a point of pride. Within a community and a proclamation, again, getting back to, let's say, Pride Month or something like that. You know, we have. A. Small group of. People here in Wellington that receive no recognition at all and probably receive a lot of scorn. And if we're going to be inclusive, then. I I would not want to discard that because the majority of the population.
I understand that, absolutely, I understand that, I understand that.
It's not as small.
Controversial.
Yes, sir.
And that's it. Small as you think, it's small because they choose not to come out because they're not celebrated and they're not welcomed and they're not. Made to feel comfortable in a community where in our vision statement that we just made, we talk about inclusion. And being a welcoming community to all. You can't say that and exclude whatever. Communities you don't. Feel you personally align with. We are bipartisan board and we are here to support the entire community. And if that means supporting groups that we don't personally align with, then that's our job.
I a- and I totally appreciate that view. I I think my view is much more with. Kind of aligned with what the mayor was mentioning that I I think proclamations in general should be. Your kind of encompassing. Government proclamations, if you will, kind of your generic stuff that, you know, communities all kind of celebrate every year and that sort of thing. And that's just my viewpoint. If we want to add other stuff, I I that's fine. It it's just my view that. I think it's. I think you. Not controversial if we go with, you know, kids park, kids.
Well, and you stated your view, right? And you said you were fine with us going this route.
That's fine.
You know?
Yeah.
So we're in agreeance on that, so that's what, that's what we'll do.
I think one of the most amazing things is that Wellington. Always sits there and prides themselves on, we are not just like every other community. And I think one of the things, and I've been in agreeance with trustee Moyer on this. For since we've discussed it in general the first time, I'm willing to do whatever the board is most agreeable to. But the great thing about proclamations is. Look at how many people attend our proclamations regularly. And then look at how many people attend when it's valuable to them.
Sure.
So and not everyone's gonna attend every single different proclamation, but it gives the community an opportunity to embrace like the football team or embrace. People that celebrate Pride Month or embrace National Bible Week. So I think the best thing about. Having this open to vote on trustees is we are elected. By the community to represent the voice of the community. The same people voted for me didn't vote for you. The same people that voted for you didn't vote for me. So I think that's possibly the best way to reach as many votes as possible. Is sitting there and kind of hashing it all out. Will it, there might be disagreements, maybe, but. So I think one of the best things I've heard from this board came from trustee Cannon when he said government is messy. And that that statement has stuck with me for an extended period of time because it is messy. But it doesn't mean just because it's messy and we disagree that we can't move forward with something productive. I think having the list is an awesome idea and sets the knowledge and standard, but we can also then January start sharing that list. So more people start showing up to meetings, celebrating certain things that are important to them. I think this is a win-win for. Pretty much everyone and having a voice. And that, and that's what we're doing in these proclamations is giving our community a reason to celebrate and a voice.
It also takes a little certain level of tolerance among ourselves as well. I mean. You know, we, you know, you might have a topic you're passionate about, you want to hear a proclamation on, then there's another topic that we're not passionate about. I think uh it's it's about a celebration necessarily, not not the fact that whether you're a hundred percent agreement or alignment with what that proclamation says or means. So, you know. I like the idea of, let's let's get that list.
Yeah.
You know, that that we can bring out, I mean, first of the year, we'll be.
We can put a pin in that.
We approve a lot of things at the first of the year, like meetings and everything else like that. And you could put that list together.
Yeah.
Yep, we can work on that.
Okay. Um, I think I have. Clear direction on. The next version of this that will be in front of you. Hopefully we'll get to.
Version nine hundred and seventeen.
Well, hopefully that'll be the voting. Yeah, hopefully that's the final one.
Yeah.
Right.
I think, yeah.
So I think I feel good. Um, so now jumping down to um sections uh thirteen and fourteen, these are alternates. Um, as I said at the beginning, um, section thirteen I identified as alternate A. Um, this is the same language that's been in the proposed bylaws since we've begun this conversation. I've just cleaned it up a little bit, just to for really formatting here. Make it. Look a little better and the read a little bit better. Um. Section fourteen, alternate B is the section that I worked on with uh trustee Moyer. Breaks things out a little more, a little more bulleted, a little more clear, perhaps. Um. And then certainly has a a more extensive section, section C there, consequences for breach, um, which includes possible ramifications. Um, that's not included in the first section, uh, or excuse, not included in the first.
Alternate. Eighteen. Yeah, I thought it was so.
Well, it's not in section thirteen.
It's in our regular ordinances.
But it's.
Right.
That's absolutely right. I I think that's a great point. No, it wasn't up there prior, trustee Wigan, um, but the consequences that are in there are.
The same.
Are the same things that you've always had the authority to do. I mean, there, this isn't adding authority to the board for censure or um. Censure request for resignation, removal proceedings. This isn't creating authority in the board. It's more just clarifying, these are the potential ramifications for for a breach. But those weren't spelled out in the original version here. So um, those are the two alternates um, from 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 my angle. They're pretty similar. Um, legally, you know, um, I I don't, I don't really have a preference um personally. Um, I think they both say about the same thing, one just says it. Perhaps clearer.
I want clarification.
You like alternate, alternate B?
Yeah.
I like alternate B.
I do too.
Yep. Good.
I'm.
You still like it?
Whatever.
I love it and I appreciate your work on it, Dan. I have a few comments and I. Apologize that I didn't get my questions or something for you today I was processing, so. Um. One question I had is if we need to, and we probably don't, but maybe we want to, since we're seeking clarity, go into like more of the definition of what those. Confidential documents are and how like voted on by the board. Do they include like town personnel matters? Do they include like? I don't know, it may be unnecessary. And then in fourteen B, um. Everyone loves a paper trail. Do we want to have like a formal written submission process for?
Um, okay, so.
I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, just some consequences that I kind of thought of over the weekend, like. Could we require a a person to go to see it, like take a CMO ethics course if they have like their first offense? Instead of censure or whatever, like. Um, I don't know, these are just ideas I'm tossing out and then um. If it's, if it's a serious offense. Could they lose their committee or liaison positions? To signify like, no, we're not going to remove you or go that extent, but this is serious enough that action really does need to be taken. Um.
That's actually what a formal censure is.
Yeah.
I mean, you get removed completely from your other duties.
No, it's just a formal, like, this is serious.
Well, it's a slap on the wrist, so I'm saying between slap on the wrist and removal, there may be a middle ground, right? And then between the middle ground and slap on the wrist, or maybe just as a starting point, like, hey, you messed up, maybe you didn't know you were messing up. Maybe you need to go through this.
Isn't that a discussion that would come in the formal censure, though? I think how it says, I'm okay with how it says, and it's starting to have threatening. You do this and we're gonna do this is kind of, we're all adults.
I don't think it's threatening. I think it's just adding to the menu of possibilities so that people understand that. There are all levels of things that could happen, and it's not excluding anything that could happen. It's suggesting alternatives and like the. Further ethics training, I think, is a really great way to kind of redirect and retrain. Um. Which could be beneficial to any of us, right? That's why we go to CML.
This is one of the reasons why I, my original version wouldn't have spelt these things out, because once you start spelling them out, you start saying, well. Now, the consequences are A, B, or one, two, three, or four, excluding anything that's not in the list. And so now you're coming up with other things. So now we have to expand the list rather than uh, in the first version, the proposal was, if you breach these. There will be consequences. Um, and and that just leaves open for the board to make that determination from the full menu of things that it already has the authority to do. Again, this doesn't create the authority. Um. A CMO ethics cape.
Authority.
I'm sorry.
It can't create.
No, exactly, exactly, exactly. Uh, I, so. It's something like requiring a CMO ethics training, absolutely, the board can say, you need to take a CMO ethics class. The the consequences for not doing it, though. Um, then there's no automatic consequences. So if you don't, if the trustee says, well, no. Then what?
I mean. Yeah. I I'm being, I I I like the language.
No, all.
Personally, I I take the idea of censorship very seriously, right? So if, you know. If there was to be a vote on that, I suspect that the the board has the ability to. Uh, revoke your appointment to boards and commissions really at any time. So I mean, if somebody wanted to add that as part of a censorship vote. I think that's appropriate. Um, I don't, I don't necessarily think it needs to be spelled spelled out here. I think, I think to me, this language is is pretty clear and you. I I agree with Dan in the sense that if we just start adding all kinds of stuff in here, it's, you were gonna really muddy the waters, and I don't really think that's the intention.
Well, and doesn't it lay out the proper procedures in our actual ordinance on what to do if a trustee is brought up on investigations, blah, blah, blah? There's like a whole section for it.
There there is a process that would, it's not incredibly clear because it's never been done. Um, but it's it's, there's a process that comes from state statute and we've got um somewhat of a process in our town code, and it really just deals with removal. Of a of a trustee. Censure is not something that's spelled in our ordinances. Censure is effectively just a statement of his board.
Who's okay with it?
Disapproval.
Who's okay with it as it's written as alternative B?
Could there be something that leaves it open to include things other than this, like just a and others or something? I don't know. So that it's not limited to just this list, but it's open to. And I know you're saying we already have that.
No, I'm just worried about what, what, what could that possibly mean? If you if you just put and other, well, what?
You're good with it.
Well, I would be concerned of that from a legal aspect.
Dan, you were right.
So you're good with it? Well, I'm fine with it the way it is.
Trustee Daly, are you okay with as it is?
I I like the idea of um determining. Consequences at that moment because it may be different for each scenario, but I do. Agree that some people take would take that very seriously. Um, trustee Mason, other people wouldn't, so um. I think having consequences is important, but I think what the. What would be needed is a case by case basis, so it kind of need to be determined. Maybe something consequences would be. You could say such as or could be blah, 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 but not limited to. Those things, so.
That was gonna be my.
A list of possible ideas of what what those consequences could be.
Good, yeah.
A slight modification to that one sentence to say.
Mm-hmm.
The following, but not limited, make sure, make it not on an exclusive list.
Sure.
So that would be a a a simple change.
But is it, what, how is it forcible is my question?
This would all require a vote of the board.
Okay.
I mean, any of these things would.
It's it's, it's the same thing, just.
If there, if there were another, if the board wanted a trustee to take a ethics training as a compromise, well. That would have, the board would have to vote on that, and then if it, the enforcement of it would be another board vote. I mean, it's.
Right, but can they force you to do an ethics class?
The board could say you must do an ethics class.
Push you in the door. I I suspect the way it would work would be is if 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 the board said you have to attend X class and. Buy a vote, and you said, well, I'm not going to do that. That could be grounds for.
Mm-hmm.
Something else.
But.
I mean.
But hey, think of it this way, let's say we were, you know, another municipality who had maybe. A trustee show up on the, on the video, you know, shouting at people for half, perhaps, say, perhaps we had that. And then we said, we don't agree with that. We are requiring that you take an ethics course. That's a statement by the board saying. We don't approve of that, of the behavior that occurred. We don't think it's ethical. We think this person should improve their ethics. Now, whether or not they do it or not. Is a, you know, a reflection of that person. But more so ordering that is a reflection of the board. So I think the ordering of it, regardless of whether or not they follow through with it, because obviously they may or may not care, right? But but the the board ordering it says, this is, this action was unethical, we're taking a stance against this action, and the result was we would. Pursue them being more ethical. So I think regardless, it should be in there, whether or not we can force someone to rehabilitate, we can't do that. But we can't say it from the perspective of the board of, we absolutely do not condone and want to improve specific behavior.
So a censure.
It's.
Is is a, is. So a censure is is a, it's 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 a disapproval.
Yeah, it's a.
Especially.
It's essential without a censure.
Essentially in a formal state. And that and say, here's the action. Here's where it's wrong. You know, and and you put them on notice that that action is not to be tolerated. You know.
My idea is if that action were to happen again, then it would absolutely be coming before the board for a review of has been misconduct. That's misconduct and stuff and that's laid out in our ordinance.
Yeah, I feel like the censure, whether it included the ethics class or not, if that's the board saying, don't do that. If the person does it again or doesn't take the ethics class or whatever, perhaps then the board decides, well, we need to proceed with removal of removal proceedings. And then in those proceedings as grounds, as the basis for for that could be, well, we already told you it's not a good idea. We even did a formal censure. We asked you to take these steps to 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 learn to maybe improve. You didn't even do that and you did it again. We feel like we have no choice, right? So it's it they they kind of layer upon each other.
And everything, I mean, we're setting here is for future board. Right? Cause we 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 we've not had this.
Right.
But so are we setting, but they can alter it at any time, correct?
Of course, yeah. They they, but it might take them. It might take them.
Their entire term, fine.
I I can make that change to make it a non-exclusive list. I think that covers the 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 concerns um and and if this needed to be dealt with. It kind of builds upon each other. Um, did you want me to address the other items that trustee were?
I feel like they're less important, although I do like a paper trail. But if everyone else is comfortable with everything else, then it's fine.
I I think that is the intention. I think this sets it sets it up for that paper trail.
Yeah.
Explicitly. So I I like. It'll be in a live meeting either way.
The 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 process here is not, doesn't include, this must be a written request. It doesn't, I I started out with some more detail in the processes. I was kind of thinking about this, but um the whole nature of this provision is about confidentiality. Right? And so if it 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 creates a difficult situation where if a trustee has to come to an open board meeting with a written piece of paper saying another trustee breached confidentiality by saying X, Y, and Z. You see the problem there of doing that in a public meeting? So um left it a little. There is a process here. It's um, it doesn't say it must be on paper, but um you need to take some steps. As I started writing it out, it kind of became like the proclamation section, which one of the original concerns, well, it was a bit wordy, a bit lawyer. Section B started out with about uh ten bullet points under it. And I thought, let me back that off a little, so um. It it would be formal. I mean, the process, the idea here is this is a formal process, um, but I didn't want to start exactly what that was where you're requiring papers, something like that. So that was the, that was the intent. That's why I didn't hit that. Section B with that change, okay? Give me one second to make my notes. Okay, and then um section fifteen, uh, this is a new provision since the last time was discussed. It's a whistleblower protection um that was drafted partially by trustee Teets. As I said, I made some edits to it. Um, I I will say I I went looking for similar provisions.
It's in the state. I pulled it straight from the state of Colorado.
But they don't exist for elected officials.
And under a certain title, they do.
That section.
They do under a certain.
That section you included doesn't only applies to employees. It does not apply to elected officials.
It lists trustees and planning commissioners and.
It, well, the the section you had cited in there, the reason I removed that is it was specifically for employees. I cannot find any town, any municipality, any county that has a provision like this.
The thing I was gonna mention is that whistleblower protection is an employment protection. That is the purpose of whistleblower protection. So that that was a concern I was gonna bring up.
Mine too. I mean, we would ultimately be the people that the whistleblower would be coming to in essence. Um, and I think it does create redundancies with policies that are already in place at like this is a federal level. And then when you start trying to enforce these, then which policy are you now referring to and taking action from? I just think you could put a whistleblower clause in the confidentiality piece. Some
Okay, just as long as the.
One, one piece there that's like. I don't know what it would say, cause I'm not a lawyer, but I don't know, something where you could capture the like essence of this piece and get rid of the piece and refer up to state or federal policies is my suggestion.
Can that be done?
I I I I would feel a little more comfortable with that than a whole section on whistleblower protections. I I haven't tried to, I haven't tried to draft that and I'd have to work with you to turn to ask Williams that you.
Yeah, actually just taking this blip right here without calling it whistleblower protections. And just taking this blip right here that specifically states that trustees are allowed to report a violation of federal, state, or local law or regulation, gross mismanagement, misuse of public funds, fraud, or abuse of authority, or a substantial or specific danger to public health or safety. So pretty much you can just take A, B, C and plop it over to the confidentiality item and there doesn't need to be a new section.
There was one other thing. I'm sorry, I just turned my paper over.
So who agrees with that?
No.
I I don't think we need a section fifteen myself, right? But if we we can put that in with another one. Reflect what damage.
Well, I would say it would be a much kind of the vibe, the intent, not the exact language was what I was getting.
Do you wanna just transfer A? Trustee may in good faith report concerns to appropriate oversight enforcement authorities if they reasonably those concerns involve.
Yeah.
One, two, and three.
Also, my other thing, just before we solidify our thoughts. Um, it says shall not be censored and I'm wondering if it should be may not in case upon review that claim is found to be like false or malicious or.
Well, she was just talking. She was just in the green, so just moving to A. So getting rid of D and C, so then we don't need to talk about, see if we get rid of it.
Yeah, cause I mean, you're, you have those protections in place in general, cause I mean, there's lawsuit retaliation for someone that I I'll find this this section. I can send you this section that I pulled out of.
So are we good with keeping A and putting it in under confidentiality?
Yes.
Which would be A, I, A one, A two, and A, uh, looks like four, should be three.
It's three um red lines.
I I think I, I I think I understand the intent behind this, but I I guess my only concern would be uh just for example, like we have uh mis misuse of public funds, for example. If if you were a trustee that happened to believe that, well, I think that X money should not be going to uh some park project or whatever it may be, who knows? Uh, and you happen to disagree with the board in that regard and you felt very passionate about it and decided you were going to report that to an ethics, I mean, is that?
No, that's a growth management, misuse of public funds. It's gotta be in good faith. So it has to be.
How do we, how do we, what is that? If the majority of the board says, well, we 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 are going to do this and one member of the board says that, well, I I fully do not agree with this, but the the major, the super majority of the board does.
Yeah, it would be in good faith. So violation of federal
That's what I'm saying. Good faith is relative, but upon like if one member goes, we're not protecting that member because already they're they're in violation of our code of ethics by going rogue. So that is against our policy period. So then if that claim is then judged to be incorrect or false, what is the consequence for that? We would come up with that as a board as determined above. So that's where I'm like, shall not be censored. If we just go with A, fine. If we don't and we start including some more language from the policy, I'm just suggesting we say may not.
Who here is okay with moving or with A? I I I think I'd be fine with giving that a shot. Uh, of course, these can be modified at any time. Be abused. We could fix that.
Well, I don't think.
Can I get trustee Daly?
I'm I'm reading through it again. Um, skip me please, or. Yeah, I don't want anything in the whistleblower section to be included whatsoever. It's redundant for our actual job duties. Like obviously, we're supposed to speak up and we're supposed to have an opinion on all these things and we're supposed to. We all take a pledge to our constitution state, you know, everything upon sitting in these seats. So this is redundant to those kind of things. And if we're talking about this, like the purpose of this document, it's it's redundant and the reason why whistleblower protections are not included in these kind of things is it's not applicable. So just taking away the name whistleblower, but still having the same information, that doesn't make any sense. So this is it, this is employee protection. Where this, we're not serving the position of employees in this position. Um, so it's not appropriate. So I do not want anything in the whistleblower section or anything describing it included.
Okay, thank you for your input. Trustee Kanan?
I agree. And I said this a bit earlier that the whistle protection language, I don't think is necessary in there at all. You know, as trustees. The model is that, okay, we we bring to a vote, we have a good proper debate and whatever the vote is, that's the direction of the town. If somebody doesn't agree with that thing, they can always go out and tell people, well, I disagree with that. And this is my reason why. It's our responsibility as a trustee. Uh, you know, that doesn't mean that we will physically try to block that policy because that to me would be would be uh a foul, in my opinion, but this, the way this is worded, this could be, I think it could be twisted into into a lot of just really harmful and 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 time-consuming arguments and debates. I just don't think we need a fifteen in there. If if whistleblower protections are for employees, we are not employees, we are elected officials. Let's drop the whole paragraph.
So I think I might be able to kind of clarify, when I had brought this up, the the reason and item for bringing this up has nothing to do with anybody's votes, one way or another. This has absolutely nothing based off of who's voting for what or anything. A vote is a vote and that's that. When you're reporting unethical behavior, when you're reporting conflicts of interest, where you have brought up an item, you've stressed it's an issue, then you report it because you know it is actually our duty and responsibility that if we see an unethical item come before us to report said unethical item. That is a responsibility of us as trustees, as any planning commissioner, trustee, any board member or commissioner that sits in any board in here. And this has nothing to do with a vote of, I don't like the way you voted, so I'm gonna report this. This has absolutely everything to do with one of the reasons why the state has it in certain title sections. And the section that I sent over, it wasn't titled a whistleblower protection. It was actually titled something different. It was under ethics and responsibilities. So this whistleblower protection, when I had initially sent it over, I'll have to find it again. It's actually not listed under whistleblower whistleblower protection in the code that I sent over and I actually sent over the exact state, the CRS number where this can be found. And this is under ethics. And this is under a totally different section than a whistleblower section. This is under ethics and confidentiality and all those items in the title that I had sent over. And it specifically states trustees and it goes on to actually elaborate more than trustees. It goes on to every single different board in a community. So this is not a whistleblower protection. This is specifically stating that a trustee in good faith, if they see unethical behavior, they can and actually should, if you read the ethics in the state of Colorado, you should be reporting unethical behavior in general.
Can I ask a clarifying question maybe on that? So for example, if A, uh, if one board member perceives there to be a conflict of interest from X person and the rest of the majority of the board perceives uh, that to be a negligible conflict of interest, or maybe not at all, a conflict of interest. How does that fit into?
Well, then it comes back to the board has made a decision where they don't view that, but they've taken. And that's why unless a conflict exists, it's added here in the section B. It states that you bring and your such reports may be made through lawful and appropriate channels, which may include the town attorney unless a conflict exists. So this is a conversation that the board would have unless there is a conflict as far as it involves a decision that our town attorney, a trustee, or I mean, we're supposed to be acting as a whole, not as singular.
I I suspect there would, I and I apologize for, I I I suspect then there would have to be a process for if a board member believes there to be a conflict of interest, then we'd have to basically have some type of executive session and talk about what the perceived conflict of interest is and determine whether the board agrees with that or not. And then so I
Absolutely.
Because if there was just to be one person that says, well, I just fundamentally disagree with the board says, and I think that's unethical or whatever it happens to be, and I just go do that, that would be
No, I think that that.
Opinion against the will of the rest of the board, so.
False, then like.
I think the process would be to, it wouldn't even have to be in an executive session. I think if there's a issue with a planning commission member or or anybody, that would need to be brought to the board. Now, you know, in your example, if one member thinks there's a conflict, but six don't, um, there needs
So would we?
That would actually need to be brought to the board for discussion.
So would we make a trustee may in good faith report concerns to appropriate oversight enforcement authorities if reasonably believe there are concerns that involve these things, but they must bring it to the board beforehand?
Well, I I I'm saying that I think the board is, the board itself is the oversight authority, actually. I mean, that's and that's one of the, that's kind of one of my challenges with putting this one together. If there's an ethics concern for a uh planning commission member, the the oversight authority for that planning commission is the board as a whole. If there's a concern about mismanagement of funds within the organization, that that's the board's of the board's responsibility to manage the the town administrator. Um, and so it would be an issue to be brought before the board. I mean, the the board is the oversight authority. Uh, for most of these issues, if there's an issue of danger to public health and safety, the that's the board's job to take action to stop that. I mean, so so in most of these cases, the board itself is the oversight authority. If there's a concern about an ethics issue with an official, the board has the sole authority to remove that official. And provide that oversight.
As a board as a whole and can move other items saying, you know, if there was an issue with you, Dan, vote as a board to take it up the chain.
Vote as a board doesn't take it up the chain. The board is appointing authority.
Right, right, right. We can definitely handle it on our own, but if we needed to make a report, we would vote on that together.
Sorry, trustee Daly, I just saw your hand.
Well, I just wanted to mention, I think still a lot of this is redundant to the the responsibilities we already have, right? And then the other thing is, my concern is, including this in here, it almost seems as is it, it would embolden like a rogue board member to to act in certain ways to say that they are defending or doing certain things when really it is the the behavior of the entire board that should be doing this from the accountability perspective. So I, it's not appropriate here. It's redundant to our actual duties. I I don't want it in there.
So can I ask a question? Really quick? Um, so Dan, am I to understand that if this isn't in here, if a trustee wants to report unethical behavior, we're saying that there's no route for them to go and reporting unethical behavior unless it's approved by every single one of the board members?
I I'm saying that if you.
Cause that's a violation.
I'm saying if you believe there is unethical behavior by a a town official, which would include an appointed official, another trustee, or a a committee member, the body with oversight to remove that person is the the board.
It's not for removal, it's to report an unethical item. So you're saying that there's nothing in the state statutes that state a trustee or any member of the community can't go and make a report of unethical behavior?
I I think if I I I, in my, in my opinion, if if a board member saw unethical behavior, then that of a town official, then they should probably have that conversation with the board as a whole to, because if that official is engaged in unethical behavior, perhaps they shouldn't be an official of the town. I think this is the body with oversight. This is the body that has the authority to take action. This is the body that can uh, can can cause consequences for unethical behavior.
This is the body that signed up to work together as.
The one that's the body that signed up to work together as a unit. To make decisions for our community. So an individual did not. Sign anything, make a commitment, raise their hand and take an oath. They can go whistleblow all they want to up to whoever. And have no consequences or consequences deemed on case by case, like whatever they decide to say and whether it's true or not, but we as a board. Have committed to acting together. And unless, like you said. There's a reason to not bring it to the board. I said it from the beginning, we are the decision makers. I agree with you, trustee daily. And trustee cannon.
That's that's kind of why I said, I if if there is. A perceived conquer conflict of interest by that X party, whatever that happens to be, the the board needs to have a discussion about, I I will. This is the way that needs to go, I mean, if. If we're just having random board members report X thing for X reason. I I mean, is that? In the town's best interest necessarily, I mean, if if we if if the majority of folks say that, well, you know. Uh, maybe there's a perceived conflict of interest on X thing, but but the board, the rest of the board says, well, no, we don't really think that that's a significant. Conflict, then. Then it's not a conflict, I I suppose would be my point of view.
But that's why the independent ethics review committee exists. Is they do make those rulings on certain things, but you have to send it to them beforehand, they cannot rule after a decision has already been made. They cannot rule, what this does is if you do report to an independent review committee. It actually assists in protecting and saying, hey, we sent this out to this entity, they exist specifically for this reason. We sent this out to this entity, they made their ruling and totally support that that decision is extra supported, so when someone wants to come back in the community and try to claim. That there was no extra precautions taken, they thought this conflict existed, they knew this was unethical and they did it anyways. We can literally say, no, this has been reviewed by an independent ethics board who specifically stated. This was okay, when it comes to someone involving, I know for a fact in the state of Colorado, there there is protections for. Elected officials and items like that to be able to report unethical behavior, so. What I was doing here was making it aware for future boards and board members to be able to see that they can report unethical behavior. Without facing any kind of censure or getting removed from a board for reporting. Now, there is a very specific list on items that you would report on and you can't do it out of malfeasance or anything like that, because then you can be brought up under our ordinance for removal for malfeasance and intentional. Harm to our community or our board, so what this specifically states is something that's already stressed in code and like you said. We can address this again after I review my email I sent to Dan, but this already exists. For elected officials.
Trusty cannon wants to go.
This already exists in the state of Colorado, and if I choose to, even if we don't adopt it here, if I were to choose to report unethical behavior. I still do have specific protections under the reporting of unethical behavior. What I was trying to do was sit here and state some trustees that come on after us might not know that these protections exist. So making people aware, the trustees aware and the community aware. That we still as a board can report unethical or conflict of interest behavior that they deem. One way or another, it's not our decision to say, yeah, that's okay, or no, that's not okay, that's our independent review committees decision. Or one of the reporting entities listed here, state auditor. Colorado Attorney General, that's their decision then to come back and say, no, this isn't warranted, or yes, this is warranted, we're going to investigate it. All you're doing is simply reporting. You're doing nothing else but reporting.
Trusty cannon.
So. As a town, as trustees, we are. For follow state statute, if protections are already in state statute, we do not have to list that again in our bylaw, bylaws are your operating, general operating procedures. For how we will function as a board. During meetings, preparing agendas, you know, dealing with public comment, those kind of things, you know, we don't need to rewrite state statutes into our bylaws because we're already.
We already.
Already held to those standards, okay, so let's get rid of fifteen, we don't need it.
Okay.
Who's in agreeance?
I. Yep.
Okay, I I think I'm fine with it, I would just, I would just say, maybe just as one final comment, I if. If there is, you know, for any trustee, if you know, if if there's a perceived. Wh- whatever violation of whatever, please do make sure that that's brought before the board, whether it's an executive session or whatever that happens to be, it probably needs to be discussed and please bring the evidence of that so that we can. You know, determine that, make a. Make a judgment call based off that, but I mean, you know, that that's my point, though, just, you know, we need to be vigil vigilant about. Any of these things, and if there's an issue, we we should talk about that, so I just, that's my final word on it.
Clear as mud. Getting rid of fifteen.
Are there other points? Or can I make these changes and bring this for approval?
Make changes, bring it forward for approval, all in favor?
I'm fine with that. I'm in favor of that direction.
That section is not. So I'm just saying that if when it does come forward, I support a lot of the stuff in here, but it'll be.
Because of that.
Yes, yeah, and I was willing to bend to a lot of stuff in here, but this is one thing. That I'm just not willing to budge to.
Would it be that big of a deal putting it in? In the ethics part, like what we discussed, even some of the wording? I don't know.
I think it's like trustee cannon said, it is in fact already in state statutes, would already have to follow.
Like what she was referring to is. Most trustees don't know what the state statute is on, this would just give somebody, I mean, and most of the time it's just a reporting part anyway, it. It just. People may not know if it's. A actual breach or whatever else, but it'll be a place where they could go to to confirm or say nay.
I think assuming it's not with the lawyer, they can go to the town lawyer who is here to give legal advice, and if they're an elected official and they're sitting in this position, I would. Argue that it's their job to become familiar with all things pertaining to the position. Like. If you're concerned about something, you want to let someone know, do some research, see what's out there, I mean. I feel like there are resources that we don't have to spell it out for. Future board in twenty five years that there's this possibility that they can do this. Well, I don't know, I didn't know, and I got worried because I received notice about things that could happen to me. For issuing a report, and I was threatened with things that could happen to me, so I don't want another trustee feeling that way. Y'all read the same email I did, so. Maybe they wouldn't feel actually first place. Just a sec, to feel like that and to feel that that worry of, oh, God, what did I do something wrong? And then have to go and speak to an outside attorney to figure out I didn't do anything wrong. But then I had to involve our town attorney who was involved in the report, so then what? Like, that's why these protections, that's why it's specifically, I'm sure that's why it states it in this title. That I had copy and pasted from the state. Unless a conflict exists with the town attorney, so this is kind of where that stick and sticky mud thing comes in, is. I didn't know, I thought I knew it first, so I did my reporting and then I got threatened afterwards. With two pages of things that could have happened to me, then come find out that I didn't do anything wrong. Well, except for coming to the board, because had you come to the board, someone on the board may have been able to guide you. But you didn't do that, you acted on your own. But I didn't need the guidance, what I was, what I did was totally within the realm of appropriate. So that's kind of that. In your opinion. Two, well.
Okay, we're we're.
We're off topic.
We're we're way off topic. So the board as a whole.
Gave the direction.
Gave the direction, we'll move forward with that, then this this will be brought forward to a public.
And and to be honest, it looks like. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, A, B, all that kind of stuff is all based on one event, which. You know, at the end of the day, I'm okay with with all terms, A, which is kind of loose. Without any kind of specifics and get still getting rid of that last thing about whistleblowers. But, um.
Are we going backwards now?
Yeah, we're going backwards now.
I like that, I just.
I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about.
So.
Write bylaws.
So I'm gonna take this meeting real quick here, trusty cannon. Um, we all discussed every one of these items already. We're not gonna open this can of worms again unless you really want to. Are we all in agreeance that this can be brought forward?
Sure.
Board of vote.
Yeah, and if there's any further discussion, it can happen during in public, so it's all good.
Perfect, perfect, okay, now we will move on. Thank you. Hugh, the library board policies, Ross Lozit Lojanet will be presenting this item, he our library board director. Or library directors.
So the reason I'm coming tonight is, uh. Similar to other departments, the legislative season has ended, the session is ended, and we have a couple, um, policies internally within the library that need to be met per state statute. Um, the first one is the data privacy, um, that is simply. Um, you have the draft before you, it is in the packet, it is simply not collecting and keeping information, which we don't do for any patron. If an ID, if, I mean, we do ask for an ID once they become a patron, it's viewed, it's verified, and we never record the information. This was one that I need to get before the board. Um, because there's a fine attached. If I was to have any document within the library or a photocopy of someone's state issued ID or federally issued ID. Um, I could be fined, the library could be fined fifty thousand dollars. So. Some things that hit the legislative floor, I do wait on. Before we engage attorneys, um, and create things, which is the other policy. But this one has a fine. So I needed to get it before the board and will present next week. Um, it has to be in our policies by September first, it was a quick turnaround, I learned about it at CML.
And what you're doing is within the state and the federal.
It doesn't affect, we're not gonna get fined because we do not retain records.
Perfect.
For people, so I'm not concerned, it also, um, you know, if someone, if a state agency comes in. And asks for people's records, it's amount, it's amount all down, I won't give it to them, um, they have to have it.
Why would you even have?
I'm sorry?
Why would you even have?
If someone, if someone wants someone's physical address. I'd like Joe.
You have to be a detective with like a warrant, they found a book at a murder scene, like.
You have a, you have to have a judicial court order, so as this was even going through the session, I already informed staff, do not talk to anybody, come get me. And if I'm not there, the succession is to find Patty.
Perfect.
Or Dan, so everybody has Dan's number. Um, but we just, we just don't do that, it's a library. So I'm not concerned about it, I just have to have it within the documents by September first.
Okay.
That we won't retain people's. Pictures or information.
We all good with that?
Perfect.
Well, that's both pieces of paper, right?
What?
We're not just talking about one policy, we're talking about just the policies in general.
No, no, no. So that's the data privacy, sorry.
I'm with both of them.
That's the data privacy, um. So I will then, again, I will come next week and present and it will be a motion or.
Consent?
No.
A consent agenda?
Yeah, that's one of them.
Emotion agenda?
You know, I get nervous with these.
We'll talk about it.
So we just have to get shut and then we'll throw it up on the internet, the internet on our webpage, so. I'm not concerned about it, um, the other one I have, this was, um, after the legislative, oh, and I do have copies of all the bills, the senate bills. Any other information you'd like.
I'd like all those copies, I'd like to read.
I will give them all of you, you can have the entire folder, um. But the reconsideration of library resources, last year, the, um, the House Senate, um, kind of tied up. What a reconsideration looks like, um, we, like I said, I take my time, I talk to my patrons, um. We already have a reconsideration. Uh, form document, people usually come talk to me, I realize that this is a good time to kind of. Get this before the board. Due to succession, I know it may not always be the a similar director, everybody in Wellington knows, come talk to me. Um, but this, like I said, the draft is included, um, basically you must be. A resident of the library district. Or municipality, you can't be an outside state, um, and there's a form, we consider it, there's a committee. Um, and then that decision, whatever decision is reached, is final for five years. So. Like I said, this was last year, I wait for the big libraries to figure things out, and then I use their attorney dollars and go, oh, love. Here it is.
They wrote something beautiful.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um, when the review committee is reviewing, they're reviewing the entire resource, right, not just excerpt. X, I can't say the word, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, excerpt, so I brought up reconsideration part, it it does ask the person who is asking, you know, they may, um, just want to move to a different section or something. It does ask, have you viewed, have you attended, have you read the entire resource, and it leads into a discussion. And like I said, I had discussions with people before and then explain. You know, the reasoning behind it, and then they understand. Again, succession, I won't always be here, so we're just kind of setting up for the next director, but it is within the director's purview, um. And there is a committee of town staff, so it's not just. The director and someone that's on the floor, I mean, has very.
I had a question.
Yes.
The, uh. Whatever, the committee is you and two others.
Two staff, two town staff members, town of Wellington, yeah.
You have final approval anyway.
Yes.
Okay, you just have the other two staff to give the input on it and what to consider and all that type of stuff, but you're gonna have the yay or the nay any.
Yes, and the form is the voice of, let's say. Joe Schmo has, you know, wants me to reconsider the library to reconsider a resource. The form is designed to also have their thoughts and their views and their reasoning behind, so they're included. And then, again, what I've done as the director is removed it from the library, so. It's like how we do an interview panel, it's never just, I want other people to use in perspectives, so then it's other staff members within the town of Wellington design. But ultimately, it is, you know, the director's decision, since the buck stops with me and I'm in charge of selection, so.
Okay.
Does that make sense, does that answer your question? And like I said.
I just wondered why you even had a committee, if you got five minutes anyway, but you're getting the input.
Probably. Well, they got that once where I really did. We have, we have signage in the library, you know, we are not parents. The the teen section is very difficult, it's a very relative, so. There has been a time where I'm like, I never thought of that perspective, and so, you know.
Yeah.
I, yes, the buck stops with me, but also I.
You will take it.
I'm a director, so everybody's views matter, everybody's perspectives matter. So that's why it's just. It's just another way to reach. Different perspectives and involve the community, but again, we've we've. That's one of the benefits I've learned of a rural library is we know everybody and so people will come talk to me, and then we have a conversation, it can be two hours, it can be ten minutes. Um, and then it's typically handled internally. However. Not always gonna be the same director, so this just sets up future boards, future directors or a policy.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thumbs up? Trustee daily.
Yep.
Yep.
Probably sock and robots.
Seven part of well.
Well, that's it, we're wrapped up, thank you, everybody.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you.